Hello, everyone, and welcome to FYI Uxbridge, a program about the people, places, and events that are happening here in our town. And today is our returning guest, numerous returning guests, Mr. Steve Steady, who is the town manager. And today we'll be discussing the Springtown Meeting warrants and the articles to go over that to prepare you for a town meeting, which will be held Tuesday, May 10th, at 7:00 PM at the Valley Chapel, which is located at 14 Hunter Road here in Uxbridge, right off of Route 16. So Steve, thanks for joining me again on our, I guess we can call this our annual visit.
It is.
Preparing for the Springtown Meeting. So the warrant has 24 articles total. And as we were discussing before, there will be one article that was being passed over, withdrawn, okay, and we'll get to that. So let's dive right into it.
Okay.
Let's talk about the articles. Of course, Ed Mahari being our moderator. He'll go over the conduct of the meeting as he usually does. Gives his little presentation about what he expects from people in town meeting. And then we dive right into Article One, Bills of Prior Fiscal Year.
Yeah. So Bill of Prior Fiscal Year is just pretty much housekeeping, things that we do every year. First few articles normally in the warrant are housekeeping. As you'll see, there's a few other ones that normally are. The goal for this town meeting was to keep town meeting kind of lean versus, you know, especially coming off what happened in the last fall's town meeting. It's not the presentation that we want to make for a town meeting where people are confused about what they're looking at. So there's been warrant control, basically. So only a few people have handled the warrant. There's been very few revisions of the warrant as well. Whatever handout that you're given at town meeting is the most current one. Actually, that's what's on, is on the town's website right now. So people shouldn't be confused in becoming in with a number of different type things. It should be what they either get at town meeting or what they've seen already on the town website. So we kind of streamline that to make it simple. My goal was to only have financial articles on this warrant. And basically, if you look at Articles 1 through 13, those are pretty much financial articles. As we got further, you know, into the process, a number of citizens petitions came in. That kind of makes up the next 10 articles. Obviously, citizens have the ability to put things on town meeting just by getting a certain number of signatures. And when they do, the Board of Selectmen is obligated to have those articles heard at town meeting, and that's what's going to happen. For our purposes today, probably just, I'm just going to comment on the articles that the Board of Selectmen are bringing forward, and that's the, or the town managers bringing forward, and those are the first few. So getting back to Bills of Prior Year, this is just a couple of bills that in the previous year got overlooked more because we had a situation where the conservation agent had changed and emails went to the conservation agent that had a number of bills in them.
Okay.
More for, you know, porta-johns that were at, you know, Paw Pond, I'm sorry, not Paw Pond, at different locations around the town. And they didn't get paid. So we need to pay for them, you know, out of funds from this year. We'll pay for them out of the facilities budget. And that gets voted, that's the first thing that gets voted at town meeting. Okay, Article Two is a snow and ice deficit. This past year was only about $71,000 over what we budgeted last year. If people remember, we did budget with the five-year average was for storms, and we got pretty close. And some things that, you know, kind of contributed to the deficit was the fact that we had some breakdowns of some between plows and trucks and so forth that cost us some money. Also, the difficulty in getting contractors this year to help, you know, with the plowing it allowed, or what the result was, was the fact that we had to be out there longer so there's more overtime paid and things along those lines. So that's what contributed to that $71,000 deficit. But all in all, considering some of the deficits in the past had been almost a half a million dollars, this was pretty close. So I think that the number that we have now in place that we're budgeting is a good one.
Great. Article Three, the big one.
Town budget. Yeah, so a couple of comments on that. As you know, we had quite a number of public hearings on the budget with the Finance Committee. So just to assure anybody watching that, every department's budget was vetted by the Finance Committee, by the Board of Selectmen. And as you know, in meetings, you know, when I met with each of the department heads, we went through line by line by line on the budget. We always budget for need, we don't budget for want. You know, the want stuff is great, but we've been budgeting more for need more than anything over the last few years. And I can tell you that in this year's budget, expenses are essentially flat. We're actually down a 1%, so, you know, basically flat. The drivers of the budget this year, though, are salaries, salaries, benefits, and property and casualty insurance. All of those things went up. Salaries went up because we instituted a classification and compensation study that we had appropriated funds for a year or so ago. The study was done through the previous fiscal year, and now we're in the process of putting that into place and budgeting it. What we did was, we compared ourselves to 14 different communities. And based on that, we set ranges for each of our jobs, each of our job classes or individual departments. So each job now has a range. The goal was never to be at the top of that market range. I set a goal internally of to be at 70% to 75% of what the range was with the thought process that if we got to that point, we'd be able to maintain our good employees and then hire people, good employees, into our organization. And that would, that Uxbridge would be a place that people want to come to, to work and stay here. And so far, the results are encouraging in that we've been able to hold on to department heads. We've also been able to bring new people in. And traditionally, in some jobs that in the past, we've had to bring people in and train them and then see them go on to other communities who are going to pay more money, but after we've invested all the money in training. So when it comes to hiring police officers and hiring people in the water and wastewater departments, we're bringing people in now who have experience, have all their licenses, and can hit the ground running versus having to put those people through training. So it's put us in a pretty good position. So those are the drivers. The other drivers, as I mentioned, health insurance. Our health insurance, this year, we went out to market last year, and we got very favorable rates, except this year, our experience changed from one year to the next. And the insurer wanted almost a 24% increase in what our health insurance rate was going to be. Obviously, that was unacceptable to me. Went back and forth with negotiations, made a couple of changes in some plan designs that hopefully will, you know, will, don't affect the employees, but it will benefit the town and brought that down to a more manageable level. But there's still an increase.
Right.
And when you're looking at almost $5 million, you know, 10% increase is considerable amount of money.
Yeah.
We are going to go back out to market again. Hopefully, we'll be able to secure a more, you know, a longer-term, longer-term commitment. And by doing that, we'd have to probably go to one of the trusts like Maya or something along those lines that would allow us to do that. And then property and casualty insurance, just because costs have gone up.
Right.
You know, unfortunately, you know, when they start to look at what rates are, they also take into consideration cost of goods, cost of goods because of supply chain issues, things.
Right.
Those all contribute to it. So that's where we are at the budget. But other than those drivers, we should be in, you know, the budget, the budget should be very, a very easy budget for people to look at. There's a couple of increases in positions, proposing two new positions in the DPW Highway Division. Again, that division was cut severely a number of years ago, and we're trying to bring it back to where it should be for a town our size. But also, by adding a couple of people, it'll help us with respect to not having the need as many plowing contractors, because that's two plow routes that now we don't have to worry about going out, going out and finding somebody for.
Right.
And that's been an issue. The other issues are the Fire Department's looking to, you know, increase a fire inspector position, which would be a promotion from within and then a backfill hire. And then lastly, including funding for a part-time recreation director. A group of parents got together and actually did an awesome survey. Survey 300 families about what type of recreation they'd like to see in the town. A lot of communities have recreation departments. And it's not just sports-related, there's a number of other things people get involved in that came through in this, in this survey. Didn't have enough time to start it if we started it in July. So we're going to start it in the, in January for the rest of the year. And hopefully, we'll have summer programs, spring programs in place for, you know, for kids in town, you know, as the year goes on. And I think people see a lot of good benefit of that. And also looking at forming an HR department is one of the things that town doesn't have, and it's something we need. Looking at internally to bring somebody or hire somebody or certified as our HR person, perhaps move that under, you know, I'm also looking at potentially having one of our department heads take a position as a assistant town manager and have HR functions and a couple of other functions under that person. So really, all I would need there would be a part-time clerk. So that's all built into the budget, again, into the salary line item. The overall increase in the budget is about a 5% increase. That includes the school budget. And I will, you know, say that the school committee this year took a different approach to their budgeting as well with the superintendent. They formed a budget subcommittee, they included some members of Board of Selectmen, they included some Finance Committee people, myself, in addition to school committee people to discuss the budget issues. I think they came up with a very solid budget. And their increase is, you know, is less than a 3% increase. And I think they've done a really good job, and I support their budget. So it's included. The other good thing, and I think what people want to know with respect to the budget, I hope they want to know this, is that we continue to spend, our expenses are, still continue to be less than the revenue we're bringing in. So let me explain that. Right now, the total property values in the town of Uxbridge is $2.17 billion. So that's what a lot of the new building we've had, commercial-type increases, but also a lot of the residential that's come in. We have a new assessor that's got a really good job of assessing property. And plus, property values are high now. Everybody, all anybody needs to do is, if you're looking to buy a house, it's tough to find one.
It's crazy.
Right. So we have high values, you take that, you multiply that by the previous year's tax rate, which was 1582, and you come up with about $54 million in revenue that's coming into the town, including some of the other revenues we have. Whereas our budget total is about $52 million. That's less any other grants that we, you know, any other state aid, all those kind of things we get. So you can see we're not spending anywhere near, you know, what we're bringing in.
Right.
Okay, so that's a good thing for the town. What happens is, at the end of the year, when free cash is certified, that money goes to free cash, and that's how we're able to fund. And you'll see as we get to Article Nine in the budget, the amount of capital that we're funding now. You know, we're funding almost $2 million worth of capital, and in the past, we were lucky, the town was lucky to fund $150,000.
Right.
So we're making considerable strides with that and, you know, and in making investments in infrastructure at the same time. So we're in a pretty healthy position there. You know, we also have gotten very good reviews from the financial community. You know, in the last couple of years, we've gone out, two years ago, we went out and went and refinanced all the town debt. We saved $600,000 because we got a rate of 0.7% interest. So basically, it's almost giving us, lending us the money that we're asking for.
Right.
So when we went back out a year ago to refinance some Water Department debt, we saved another $200,000, but that was at a 0.3% interest rate. So again, the financial picture of the town is very strong. People like what they see, they like the growth that we're getting, they like the fact that we have, you know, we have room within our levy limit to grow if we had to and borrow if there was an emergency, which some people think that's a negative, but that's a really good thing in the financial community, the ability, the ability to pay your bills. So all those things together, in addition to some of the other investments we're making and things like that, have put us in a really good position in the town. So from funding the budget, we have a budget that we're able to fund. It's an appropriate budget for a town our size. And it still leaves us with excess revenue. Now, excess revenue, can we control how much excess revenue there is? Yeah. We did lower the tax rate, as I said earlier, this is based on 1582. We lowered our tax rate to 1516. I am working with the assessor, you know, I believe we could probably get the tax rate to around $14,000, which will save even, you know, more money for people. Again, based on values, you know, that's the one thing I can't control. We can control the tax rate. But if we go to a split tax rate, we could even lower that a little bit more. What a split tax rate is, is that the residents pay one thing, businesses pay another, and there's a little bit of a difference between the two. So kind of shifting the burden a little bit. So again, a very healthy, healthy position. You know, one of the other things you'll see in the budget, or is another item, Article Eight, is care and condition of town roads. A number of years ago, we started at $400,000, just right off the top of revenue. And we said we were going to invest that in roads, and it went up 10% each year. So last year, we were $484,000. This year, we're going to invest $532,000 of town money into our roads. And it's the first time that the town is exceeding the Chapter 90 money from the state. So that's a good thing. So we're making progress on our roads. You know, as we go back and we look at the town budget and we look at Articles Four, Five, and Six, those are the enterprise fund budgets. Those are strictly funded through revenue that the enterprise funds take in, so based on rates, water rate, you know, wastewater rate, and obviously cable.
Right.
You know, money comes in through, you know, the number of cables, cable subscribers. So each of those have, are funding, are funding each of those departments. We're not using retained earnings in wastewater or water this year, so we're funding it strictly through, through the rates that are collected. And also, we're looking to make additional investments in both those departments using the ARPA money that the town received. If you remember, a year or so ago, we received $4.5 million in ARPA. We continue to work with our state legislatures and even our federal folks in securing even more money for some other projects, long overdue projects that we'd like to see done. So, you know, those two budgets especially probably will be the amount of work that's going to be done, that's going to be enhanced. Good thing about that is it doesn't hit the ratepayers, you know, because of where those funds are coming from. And that leaves money in there for other projects that could be done down the road, you know, with respect to those two departments. Or potentially, you know, and unfortunately, it would only be, you know, I kind of hesitate to even consider this, but you could use it to offset rates. But it's one of those things that you're going to have to do it on a regular, if you don't have the money to do it all the time, it's a one-time thing, and then who knows what happens after. Right, you don't want to do that. So that takes us to Article Seven. Well, actually, let's go back to Article Six, that's your budget.
That is my budget, yes.
And as you know, as cable, as cable or subscribers cut the cord, the amount of money that we get year on year seems to dwindle unless something changes through the legislature where, you know, streaming services start being taxed.
There are a few, actually, there are presently a few bills that they're looking to move forward in regards to charge a fee to the streaming services and so on. And there's a few other ones also, trying to help support pay access in communities throughout Massachusetts. It's like you said, as our funding starts to decrease with more and more people getting away from cable TV and moving to the streaming services.
I know, I've also seen some communities almost go into like public television has, you know, with memberships and so forth at the local community level. You know, nothing, you know, nothing big, but something that gives you, you know.
Yeah. A lot of towns, just a quick background, you know, a lot of the larger, what I call the larger towns, Worcester, Wellesley, they have like a million dollar or plus budgets and things like that. But they do an extreme amount of fundraising also in order to, you know, take in revenue. And a majority of them are run by a nonprofit, not a town, but they can tuck that money away for a rainy day and so on. So, but right now, we're still doing well, but looking for the future.
Well, just, as you and I have discussed, but just for people viewing this, the town also is, is looking at, if we had to, making the Uxbridge Cable TV a regular department of the town.
Right.
And funding it through towns, through town general fund budget.
Right.
I think you guys do a great job in all you do, all the programming you do, all the things you cover, and we need to support that. So it's just so people don't get concerned that, you know, what you're seeing is going to go away.
Right.
It won't.
Right.
So revolving fund accounts, those are accounts that each year, again, they're funded through various sources that money gets taken, you know, that things come into. You know, some of those funds are things along the lines like the community gardens. Community gardens each year sells their plots.
Right.
And that money goes into a fund, so the community gardens use it to maintain, you know, their property, you know, maintain that property and do whatever they need to do there. Other departments have similar type funds. All that article does is it sets the limit as to how much money can be brought into that account and expended each year. So again, a housekeeping item. We mentioned the care and condition of the roads. Now we get to capital purchases, and the nice thing about capital this year is we're making investments in a number of different communities, or a number of different departments with respect to capital. So we're investing in the DPW, Police Department, the Fire Department, the Library, and the School Department, in addition to the Council on Aging. And that's to a tune of $1.73 million. We're able to do that because we have the free cash now to do that. Normally, we would only do capital purchases at one meeting. People remember, we approved certain things last fall. Now we're doing it again in the spring, and we still have a little over $3 million in capital to be able to do projects as we get to fall again.
Right.
Plus, we'll get probably another influx of free cash. So as long as we can continue to do that, we can fund a number of different things that we can, you know, continue so we don't get behind on anything. All one has to do is, in some of our buildings, you know, look at the fact that we hadn't invested in our buildings or invested in, you know, some of our vehicles, some of the things along those lines, and, you know, see some of the conditions some of these things are in and realize that, you know, there were some opportunities missed over the years, but we're trying to rectify that now and do some things that'll, you know, again, bring us to the level where this community should be. So that's Article Nine.
And those are all broken, by the way, those are all described and broken down in the town warrant, so you could actually see what each department is receiving. And of course, once again, you can go back and watch the meetings on our website, that all the meetings and hearings have been archived and things like that.
I would encourage that because I would say the, I don't want to say beat people up.
Right.
But they pretty much beat, people came out, butted and bowed.
They do very thorough and, you know, questioning.
They do an awesome job. And it's, again, it's a, I like the fact that the people on the Capital Planning Committee look at that as if it's their own money they're spending.
Exactly.
It's almost as if they're a foundation.
Right.
And they're the ones who are, you know, doing that fundraising, and they're the ones, and so they have the town's, townspeople's tax money.
Right.
You know, because they're taxpayers.
Exactly.
And they want to make sure whatever money they expend is getting used properly.
Right.
And they do an awesome job of holding, and holding people accountable.
Right.
That's probably the most important thing, so.
Exactly.
So I thank them for all the work that they do as well. Article Ten, again, another housekeeping item. This is our Central Mass Regional Planning Commission appropriation. It's done each year based on population and a certain amount of what they need. You know, it's similar to how we do enterprise funds.
Right.
And they do the same thing, they charge us that per capita fee. This year, it's $4,260.92. It's a small amount of money considering what we get back from them.
Could you explain what CMRPC is?
Yes, Central Mass Regional Planning Commission.
Okay.
Mass General Law allows for regional planning commissions to be, to exist in various parts of the state. You know, in the Boston area, there's one, and, you know, for Worcester area, we have Central Mass. Out west, they have their own, you know, their own commissions as well. What this does is assist us in exactly what it says, anything planning. Anything from transportation to, you know, putting together a hazard mitigation plan or helping us with our master plan, they will, they will give us assistance on it. We get so many hours from them annually that we can use any way we want. And any of us that go to any of their meetings, we get extra hours that get built into that. So, you know, we might end up with, you know, 25, 30 hours of time, but it gets put to use, you know, here in town.
Right.
One of the things they do, do a great job for us with is they manage our MVP program, grant program, and some other programs as well. So having them, it's like having another person on staff.
Right.
Basically doing that for us. And it allows, you know, it frees up other staff from having to do that similar type work. So they do do a great job for us and are very responsive to our needs. Actually, they were the ones that really helped us with respect to, you know, getting some of the vaccine clinics off the ground. When it came to ordering supplies, ordering things, you know, we worked through them where they can get, you know, because they have everybody that they, they work with, so it gets some buying power and things along those lines. So they do a real good job for us.
Yeah, and they've been involved with the town even before COVID started. I remember covering some of the meetings, discussing town planning, our master plan, things like that, emergency management and so on. So it's definitely worth the.
The $4,000 it costs us. Yeah, it's small money to get with value and get from them.
Great. Article Eleven.
Yep. Article Eleven is renewal of Clause 56 for military service abatement. This is something that we have to, that we gladly renew every two years. And what this does is it allows for a tax abatement for active-duty military, either active-duty military, National Guard, or reservists who are on active duty in a foreign country for the period of time that they're on that duty. So if they, they do a six-month deployment, half the year, their taxes, the taxes for half a year are abated. If they're, if they're there for a longer period of time, we do it for a longer period of time. And like I said, this is something we gladly do. We also do, we don't do it this year, we will next year. We also have an abatement in place for any Gold Star families. If people are unaware what that is, a Gold Star family is someone who lost someone, you know, in combat or in military service. And in those cases, the family's taxes are abated 100%. And that's, you know, that's done through the state as well.
Great.
So again, something that, you know, when it comes up, hopefully, there's no hesitation in there. There should be unanimous votes on these things.
Yes, absolutely. Great, Article Twelve.
Okay, this is a grant of easement at 275 Douglas Street. As everybody knows, there's quite a lot of work being done up at, you know, up at the
Amazon.
Amazon facility and so forth. What this is, is an easement for Amazon, because they, not Amazon, for National Grid or Mass Electric, because they have to go in and maintain the, you know, transmission and, you know, high voltage lines. We gave them a license to do this so they could start the work. But the follow-up to this is now we grant them an easement. It's a dollar that we, that they pay us each year for it. But they, that way, they can pass and repass on the property to do whatever work they need. Quite common in a lot of communities, quite common in the town, we've done it in other places as well. And that's what, you know, what this easement will attain.
And once again, it's all explained in, you have a map here in the warrant showing everything.
Yep.
Great. All right.
And lastly, we get to Article Thirteen.
Yes.
Which is, that is to accept Maslow's Way as a town road. This, people say, well, this seemed to be one that comes up every year, and it has. But because in each of the previous years, there's been certain things that are part of the responsibility of the developer that, you know, shouldn't have been in their, in the original proposal that, you know, that wasn't in other development proposals that had to be taken out and had to be sure that these things are taken out. We have been. We have been now assured through our peer review and everyone else that's taken a look at it, that these conditions no longer exist, and now the road is ready to be accepted. The Board of Selectmen did accept the road at a Board of Selectmen meeting, which is why they are sponsoring this article as it goes forward. The road's already been laid out by the Board of Selectmen, so this is just a formal process that will allow the residents on Maslow's Way now to receive town services.
Right.
So that's, again, pretty standard, straightforward.
Yep. Great. All right, now we're moving on to petition articles.
Yes.
Which we discussed a little bit earlier, Article 14 through...
24.
Four are all petition articles.
Yes.
They are all laid out in the warrant, and these will be presented by town residents.
Right, by petitioners.
By the petitioners themselves, which we'll have explained. Did you want to just go over briefly, just like a quick rundown of what we might see at town meeting?
Yeah, most of them, first, at least seven or eight of them have to do with the town charter. That's the, those were, I guess, brought forward because there was a feeling there was no action taken on them at the last town meeting, and this is to see if some of the, some action will be taken. I'm not going to comment on them because they are citizens' petition, and the citizens need to state their case for, and, you know, people need to decide for themselves for or against. So on all of these, you know, probably take the same position on that. I will tell you, Article 23, there's been a request from the petitioner to withdraw that article, so we will not be acting on 23, so that's one less. But all the rest of them are included in the warrant. I will also tell you, for the articles that have to do with the charter changes, there will be a handout. It's a very lengthy handout, it's 51 pages. I'm not sure how people can get that, if they want to see that earlier. I don't believe we have, excuse me, have it yet. I'm not sure if that gets put up on town website.
Right.
But there will be copies available at town meeting. Like I said, it's fairly lengthy, it's, from what I've seen, it's like 51 pages long.
Wow.
So it's pretty significant.
Wow. And once again, if people want to get a jump on it too, they can go to our website and see the hearings that the Board of Selectmen and FinCon had.
Yes.
With the petitioners in regards to each petition article, so they can get it right directly from the citizens and the petitioners on each of those. So, all right, I think that wraps up the warrant.
Yeah. Other than, hopefully, people come out, I will tell you that everything people need is, you know, is up on the website now.
Okay.
For the most part, like I said, other than those, the handout for the other articles, but on the articles that I discussed today, all that information's there. Between now and Tuesday, if people have any questions, please feel free to reach out. We're more than happy to discuss anything with you.
Great.
But again, I think you gave the best information, encourage people to go back to when some of those hearings were held, and you can see what the discussion was on each department, you know, pretty much each line item and...
And like we said, the committees that perform these, the Capital Committee, the Finance Committee, the Board of Selectmen did a very, very good job, you know, asking questions, getting into specifics about some of these articles, and, you know, very, very detailed information that will prepare citizens for town meeting vote. So Steve, thank you very much for joining me.
As always, thank you.
Thanks. And just to give town citizens a little bit more information, if you'd like to go to the Cable Access website, which is uxbridgetv.org, you can go into our archives, and we have all those meetings archived from, when did they start? April?
Early April.
Early April. So you want to look for the Board of Selectmen, FinCon meetings, for hearings, Capital Committee also, covered a majority of their meetings also, so you should have all the information you need to make a well-established vote for town meeting. For the town warrant, if you'd like to go to the town website at uxbridge-ma.gov, the warrant is available on that, and if any other information comes up, I'm sure we'll get that up to the citizens through the website also.
Great.
Great. All right, thank you very much for watching this special edition of FYI Uxbridge. Your host, Barry Giles, station manager here at Uxbridge Community TV. If you have any ideas, or if you think of anybody that'd like to come onto the show, you can email me at bgiles@uxbridge-ma.gov, or go to the town website, look for Cable Access, give you all my contact information. Thank you for watching.